Good evening.
Good evening.
We have the Agenda Review Session. We have a public hearing on bid protests, mechanical electrical maintenance and emergency repair work at the water treatment plant, pump stations, specification number 760, or 19W. We have no orders on second or third reading.
Mr. Castle, please, can I just interrupt? I just want to see if there's any one of the representatives here from either of those particular vendors. Is there anyone here from mechanical maintenance, municipal mechanical maintenance? Is there anyone here from Longo? Okay, thank you.
We have resolutions 1, 23, number 1, approve agenda amendments. Number 2, approve payroll, 6819 and 62119. Number 3, authorize refund for a GIN tax sale certificates. Number 4, approve ADC license renewals, 2019 and 2020. Number 5, approve renewal of license for special ruling for Bay So's Island Restaurant, LLC, trading in Wild Card Grill, license number 1214, 33078008, 2019 to 2020. Number 6, approve amendment, resolution R. 061977, additional night of work at various streets, Tuesday, July 2nd and Wednesday, July 3rd, 2019, alternate dates, Friday, July 5th and Monday, July 8th, 2019, through Friday, July 12th, 2019, 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Approve relaxation of city noise burdens requested by local service electric and gas company for public service electric and gas modernization program phase 2. Number 7, approve request for use of city property requested by the New Brunswick English Seventh Day Avenue Adventist Church, Buglo Park for billions grassy area, health care for community, Sunday, September 15th, 2019, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Number 8, approve request for use of city property requested by Five Sigma Sigma Incorporated at Boyd Park, the yoga class, a group of women attending a conference at the Hyatt Hotel, Saturday, July 13th, 2019, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Number 9, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by Dr. Michael Rushnak, beginning at the Eastern Avenue entrance of Buglo Park, walking down Eastern Avenue to the train station, peaceful march to support the DAF program, Saturday, July 13th, 2019, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Number 10, approve awarded contract with Rapid Pump and Heater Service Company Incorporated for sanitary sewer pumps, nation maintenance, a 24-month period commencing July 20th, 2019, and ending July 19th, 2021, specification number 764-19P, not to exceed $168,440. Number 11, approve awarded contract with Chupano Construction Corporation for millions of various city streets, the Department of Public Works, 12-month term commencing July 7th, 2019, and ending July 6th, 2020, specification number 76319P, not to exceed $77,230. Number 12, approved rejection of bid authorization, rebid, furniture deliverer work uniform for housing inspection and fire protection, specification number 76119P. Number 13, approve awarded contract with Virstra Incorporated for proprietary hardware software for police department, not to exceed $7,383. Number 14, approve awarded contract for mechanical electrical maintenance and emergency repair work at the water treatment plant and pump stations, 12-month period commencing July 19th, 2019, and ending July 18th, 2020, specification number 76019W. Number 15, approve awarded contract for rejection of bid with severe structures LLC for emergency security property, a 12-month period commencing July 6th, 2019, and ending July 5th, 2020, specification number 75719P, not to exceed $40,000. Number 16, approve awarded contract with House Auto Body for auto body repairs for 1996 Ford, AeroStar Carbo Van Blue Park Department, not to exceed $1,801.50, Villis County Cooperative Purchasing Program, DK12, Villis County. Number 17, approve relaxation of city noise burdens requested by HTS, perform minor trim, repair, caulking, and painting of the upper facing boards and windows of the Brunswick postal office, 86 Fire Street, four weekends, June 29th, 2019, August 3rd, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, June 30th, August 4th, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number 18, approve relaxation of city noise burdens requested by the Ghana Train Company Incorporated, replace the train on private property at Johnson Johnson Hall, 501 Door Street, take down the weather vane, Saturday, July 20th, 2019, alternate date, Saturday, July 27th, and August 3rd, 2019, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number 19, authorized submission and execution of grant agreement, New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, New Jersey Neighborhood Preservation Program grant for Esperanza Neighborhood, amount $420,000. Number 20, approve amendment, resolution R. 031928, supplemental services, number 1, with Mont McDonald LLC, 2019 miscellaneous supplemental engineering services, not to exceed $2,960. Number 21, approve renewal of license with special ruling for 2018, 19, 19, and 20, for Barry R. Sharer, Chapter 7 Bankership Trustee, Rashri at New Brunswick, Genactive, license number 121433, 029011. Number 22, approve relaxation of city noise burdens and road closures requested by a table, telecable, reason complete, insulation of fiber optic line for the Brunswick Cultural Center of Nine Livingston Avenue, road closure, new street between Livingston Avenue and Door Street, Saturday, June 29th, 2019, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., not to overturn. Number 23, authorized tax collector to transfer overpayment of several tax accounts. We then have items for councils, President number 1, discussion of Lazos America, United States Cinco de Mayo event made for 2019. We've got other comments. Page three, number 2. All meetings ordered. Detective Paula Oakland.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Secora Ledway.
Here.
Council President Anderson.
Here. Please be advised that those requirements of the Open Colored Meeting Act, if applied, will be satisfied in the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice for the time and place. In conduct of all public meetings, the Municipal Council of City of New Brunswick has been filed with city clerks, replaced on a paper bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, Amy, for all due distribut. Please stand. Prepare for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as a whole.
Do you remain standing? No silence for our many women serving our armed forces here and abroad, especially those who have given up their lives or have been injured in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
May the motion be passed at the minutes. That's true.
Councilmember Egan.
I will be here, so abstaining.
So noted. Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Staying.
So noted. Council Vice President Secora Ledway.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Report of correspondence by the city clerk.
Item number 1, a letter from the Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control regarding Persif Inc. trading as "Mi Tierra" versus governed and body of the City of New Brunswick. Item number 2, a letter from Elijah's Promise regarding "Las Dos Americas Unidas Cinco de Mayo Celebration." Item number 3, a public notification outreach from GEI Consultants regarding 409 Joyce Kilmer Avenue, case number 13-0613-1639-39. Item number 4, a letter from the Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control regarding an application for an annual state concessionaire's permit by DHS Hospitality Inc. at New Brunswick Performing Arts Center. Item number 5, a notification from Mount McDonald regarding an application for a flood hazard area and individual permit and authorization under Freshwater Lands General Permit, number 1, to the NJDEP. Item number 6, a notification from the NJDOT regarding maintenance and resurfacing contract, Central 2019. Item number 7, a general information notice submission to the NJDEP by Row Associates Inc. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. Do we have a public hearing? Do that now?
Yes, this is Council President, members of council. Agenda is, as we agreed on for this afternoon's meeting, is a bid hearing, bid protest hearing, I should say, with respect to specification number 760-19W, which are mechanical electrical maintenance and emergency repair services to be provided to the water utility. In connection with this particular bid submission, there was an objection letter received from the second lowest bidder, Municipal Maintenance Company, said letter dated June 4th, 2019, objecting to the bid submitted by the lowest bidder, who was Longo Electrical Mechanical Inc., stating that the Longo bid did not meet bid requirements in that the Longo contractor was not qualified under the specifications submitted by the City of New Brunswick. Specifically, mechanical maintenance may take issue with the fact that they claim that Longo does not have at least four full-time welders on staff, which is in the city's bid specs, and that the Longo contractor does not own a minimum of three 6-inch and one 8-inch diesel dry prime bypass pumps for emergency pumping. As the council may recall, last year, around this time, we had a similar situation whereby Longo was the low bid, municipal mechanical maintenance was the second low bid, municipal mechanical maintenance filed objection, pretty much for the same reasons, and the council entertained comment from both particular vendors, and the council ended up awarding the two municipal maintenance with the determination that Longo didn't meet the bid specifications and qualifications as set forth in the city's bid. This particular afternoon, I placed both Municipal Maintenance Company on notice as well as Longo relative to the Municipal Maintenance Company's objection. Records should reflect that they were both served notice by certified mail, return receipt requested, green cards evidencing that those particular notices were sent, both received on June 25th, 2019, relative to tonight's hearing. I could represent the council that I had not received contact by either vendor, my office has not, nor have I been contacted by council for any of these vendors, nor have I received information or documentation via email or regular mail regarding any additional documentation to support either vendor's position. I do note, and noted during the pre-agenda meeting, looks like a representative from Longo is present, I don't know the gentleman.
Another man.
And there's someone here from Municipal Maintenance as well now. So having said that, and giving the council the benefit of that particular information introduction, as is practice, we should hear from the objector first, the representative of municipal maintenance, and hear from the representative from Longo, the council can ask questions, consider information, documentation, and then go for more.
Okay, yes, sir. If you could come up to the microphone, give your name and your representation.
Hi, thank you. My name is Michael Provee from Municipal Maintenance Company.
And what are your objections?
My objection, my primary objection is the mobile pumping. I believe the mobile pumps, I take this very seriously, and I believe that that's a big part of this contract. My company owns 25 of these mobile pumps, and we have reserved pumps for the City of New Brunswick. Now, in the event of a major storm, doesn't have to be right away in the storm, it could be well into the storm, or other pumps from, say, a third party could be gone, they're usually gone to the first come, first served, or I'm going to have some tag with New Brunswick City in my warehouse that you've been, at moments' notice, I can deploy these pumps at any time, before a storm, during a storm, or any moment throughout, any time where you need water moved, I have four pumps with your name on it. I've got electrical, mechanical, and welding staff on call 24/7, we rotate all of our staff, everybody is on call, as a matter of fact, 4th of July, 3:00 in the morning, I can get a welder and electrician out to you. I've been managing the city's water department for three years now, and I'm familiar with all the pumping equipment, my technicians are familiar with all your pumping equipment, response times are very good, everybody seems to be real happy with the way we work, and...
Okay, do you have some other objection, though?
Um, I, what were the...
I believe with respect to full-time welders on staff.
Yeah, I do have four welders on staff, and they rotate, so that's part of what I previously said. I also like to note that we do a lot more than just pumps, we change out a lot of aging valves that we're very familiar with, it must have been, you know, between 16 and 20 valves and actuators that we've changed, with ringing, digging holes, which I don't believe any other company is capable of doing, and I've done a pretty good job to the city regarding that.
So let's just talk about what your objections have been processed, not what you worked before. What are your actual side of the welders?
The pumps, the mobile pumps are really important to us.
Mobile pumps.
They were all, excuse me, they were all specified in the documents of the bids?
Yes, sir.
And how do you know that Longo doesn't?
I know they don't have mobile pumps, they, we have everything in hand, they don't have any of this pumping equipment in my house.
Okay. Do you have any other?
I don't have any. I believe that you might want to hear from the representative from Longo.
Thank you. Thank you. Any association with the record?
Good evening. I am Don DiClementi, Vice President of Longo. Thanks for putting this first, I'll be on the dock here tonight. I will address the two concerns that the protest letter said, that they claim that we do not have four welders on staff. For the record, the welders that we have are John Cavallaro, Gina Vitale, Jose Toches, and Miguel Ayala. Those are our four welders.
Do they need a type of specification, what type of welding specification?
There's nothing in this spec that says that.
No specification?
No specification.
Key weldings, nothing like that?
Nothing in here. Those are our four welders.
You have a copy of the certification, sir?
Pardon me?
Do you have a copy of their welding certification?
There's none required, there's none required in this spec. And then the other objection from the protest letter was that the contracts must own a minimum of three 6-inch and one 8-inch pumps for emergency pumping. Now, we took the interpretation of this spec paragraph similar to paragraph 0 of O, where it says you must have the ability to have a vac truck, but not own a vac truck. So we use that interpretation, because any other interpretation would mean that you have a restrictive spec that only one person could bid. So if you don't need, if you don't need to own a vac truck for a pumping emergency, why do you need to own pumps when we can have that same availability? So that would be a restrictive spec, and I believe it violates the state procurement law, and I'm sure that the city wasn't the intention to do that, so.
Well, with respect, I forgot your name, sir, but the representative of Mr. Longo's incumbent states the spec is clear that they must own the pumps. His interpretation with respect to the other equipment have available, is his interpretation. In my opinion, it wouldn't violate the local public contracts law if we awarded based upon the fact that there would be someone who actually owned the pumps. And I believe when the specs were prepared and Water Utility was concerned about the availability of these pumps, it was probably in the nature of a catastrophic event, and there would be limited availability of this type of equipment. And having the ownership of those particular pumps for the use under this contract, I think is liable to carrying out the performance of either vendor. So I'm certainly at odds with the gentleman's interpretation of our specs. With respect to the other piece of equipment, you're right, have available is different than actually own. But our specs are specific, and I don't think the ownership language in our specs is violative of the local public contracts law.
Well, my response to that is that you're creating a sole source procurement, so I question the city, did they do the research required by the city, the city of New York? There's other bidders that can do this, and apparently there is not, because the W was Longo and Municipal Maintenance.
Well, for purposes of this particular hearing, I am not going to represent as to know the bidders in the state of New Jersey that own pumps, but I have to believe that other particular vendors do own such pumps, whether they do it in the quantity that our specifications require or not is unknown at this point in time. The fact that only Longo and Municipal Maintenance Company responded to the bid, I believe, is indicative that no one else is out there. Certainly, if Longo wanted to go out and buy these pumps, they could certainly do that, and then they would be on all fours with this particular vendor, Municipal Maintenance.
Well, I would say that just because ownership of the pumps doesn't mean that the City of New Brunswick is going to get them during an emergency, because if somebody calls before that, and they have five pumps, they may have four pumps, they may be already gone. You know, you did not say in this spec that those pumps had to be dedicated 24/7 to the City of New Brunswick, so there's really no incidence of emergency here. So it's a very restrictive spec. So my request to the board would be, A, first thing is award to the low bidder, which we are, we are the lowest responded, responsible bidder, and if not, then we're put in a position whether we're with the protest here or at best, rebid the thing and put it out with the less restrictive requirements.
So, let me just ask something to the attorney, so in this spec, it said that they shall own the pumps, right?
Yes.
So why would you bid out of the word, it says that you should own the pumps, why don't you own the pumps? If that's what the requirement is, then why aren't you doing it?
Because we feel the requirement...
I have feelings too, forget it, let's forget about feelings, okay? Feelings have nothing to do with the bid requirements. We don't have feelings. We're talking about what it said on a piece of paper, you're supposed to have A, B, and C, you're supposed to have this, that, the other thing, the other thing. I'm just, listen, I'm no lawyer.
Neither am I.
Thank you, thank God.
Thank you.
But, no.
No offense.
No. But I believe Mr. Shamien is correct, I mean, the specifications are spelled out, and you know, the word "shall" and "shall not" mean a lot in a public document, I'm sure you understand.
I understand.
And, you know, I'm just saying, if that's what the requirements specify and be documented, then that's what you should be doing.
And our position is that it is a restrictive spec, and it will not pass muster.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Council President, the gentleman's point, his position has been stated, but there is a procedure under local public contracts law that this vendor, like any other vendor, could have objected to the specifications, long be corrected, and submit. The time has come and gone with respect to that, so I would submit that that argument is no explanation.
Okay. Thank you. Please, if you have anything else from municipal?
No, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Vote.
Yes, if the council is so inclined, I believe a motion and a second going to closed session to discuss the comments and testimony heard relative to the awarding of this bid and by the fact that it could result in litigation, a result of the award. Motion going to closed session?
Motion ordered, will you may open it to the public?
Sorry?
Last year, you opened it to the public on the bid protest, will you open this to the public?
Not closed session.
No, the, open for public comments on the bid protest.
And then motion, Jim.
When we come back, right?
Yeah, it was done last year.
Well, I believe the public comment, Mr. Cradville, would be with respect to consideration of the resolution, obviously you have a chance then to comment.
The resolution, the resolution.
Right.
Last year was...
I don't remember that. Vote.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ledway.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes.
I think the motion has been come out of closed session?
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ledway.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
I've had so much fun. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of council, members of the public, for purposes of the record, closed session, minutes consist of the council discussing the testimony elicited during the bid protest from both representatives of Longo and Municipal Maintenance, review with council of the bid specifications, local public contracts law, and the actual bids that were submitted themselves. It's my understanding council is prepared to move with respect to this particular matter this afternoon, R. 071914. If you'd like, I'll read mostly in total.
Yes, yes.
Okay. By the municipal council, whereas on May 31st, 2019, the City of New Brunswick received two bids after advertising under specification number 760-19W for mechanical and electrical maintenance and emergency repair work at the water treatment plant and pump stations for the water utility. And, whereas it was determined that the low bidder, Longo Electrical Mechanical Inc., did not meet bid specifications, and therefore is hereby disqualified. And whereas, Alexei Walers, director of the water utility, and Lee James, purchasing agent, have recommended to award the amount of $200,000 to Municipal Maintenance Company based on the second lowest responsible bid submitted for the aforementioned items at the unit prices contained therein. And whereas this contract is for a 12-month period commencing July 19, 2019, and ending July 18, 2020, and whereas funds are available for this purpose in the amount of $200,000 in the foregoing following accounts. Whereas the signature of Douglas A. Pettix, chief financial officer on the resolution, shall certify the availability of funds in the 2019 municipal budget and pursuant to NJAC 50030-525, this contract is subject to the availability and incorporation of sufficient funds in future municipal budgets. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Brunswick City Council that the bid of Municipal Maintenance Company for mechanical electrical maintenance and emergency repair work at the water treatment plant and pump stations is hereby accepted. And be it further resolved, the mayor's city clerk, be and hereby are authorized to execute a contract with Municipal Maintenance Company for mechanical electrical maintenance and emergency repair work at the water treatment plant and pump stations for the water utility for a 12-month period commencing July 19, 2019, and ending July 18, 2020, in an amount not to exceed a total of $200,000 of the unit price shown in said bid, which shall be seened only upon adoption by the city council authorizing additional expenditures therefrom. The form of said contract to be approved by the city attorney. And be it further resolved, the bid bonds for unsuccessful bidders will be returned to them. And be further resolved, certified copies be sent to the appropriate parties, I may not read that. If that resolution is sufficient with council's consideration, we will thereafter make the motion for the second, and have a public comment.
Okay. Anybody want to make a question? Second?
Councilmember Egan.
Well, we have a public comment.
Oh, yes.
This is a public comment, just on the bid protest, and giving it to mechanical mechanical maintenance in light of the things that were objected about.
Thank you. Mr. Council President, members of council, my name is Charles Cradville, I'm from New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper here, and I do just want to, for the record, read a portion of an article by Matt Friedman, December 26, 2017. This is, the article's titled "Acquaintance Christie Pardoned, Stiff Workers Court Records Show." It's a contractor with social ties to Governor Chris Christie, whom Christie pardoned on Friday, falsely reported how much he paid his workers according to court records. Joseph M. Longo, who runs Longo Electrical Mechanical, pleaded guilty in June 2016 to four counts of tampering with public records. He was sentenced to two years of probation and a $300,000 fine, and goes on to say the governor used his power and pardoned him. And this happened, actually, in our county, the case was right across the street from Willsex County Court. The agency that was the victim of the falsified records was the Middlesex County Utilities Authority, and I think it's, you know, a case where it's crystal clear that they should not be getting any business from the City of New Brunswick, especially not critically important business like taking care of these pump stations for the water utility, it sounds like the council made the right choice here, and I just want to thank you for doing that.
Forever and ever. I know, is there any time here we can bring it back to the poll, or it should be forever? Is there any time period where you can bring it back to the polls, or it should be forever?
Keep it up.
Anybody else want to do? All right. The call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sekora Ledway.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Thank you. We now have resolution 123, not including number 14. Anybody from the public who's accommodating any of the resolutions that are there in 123?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville. Starting with 905, can I just understand the status of the liquor license? I know this was the old Bennigan's, but does this have anything to do with the hotel plan for the Bennigan's, or is this no longer associated with that site?
My understanding, this is, this was in connection with that site. It's been a long time since there, but it's in pocket now. It's a special, new one with respect to directly near the city having allowed, allowing it to be renewed. So, it's not going to open tomorrow, I'll tell you that much. It's still in pocket.
Thank you kindly. The next one is the night work for PSEG. This is, you know, they've really done a number on the streets in town, and I guess you're going to give them the green light to start working overnight tonight and tomorrow. And I wanted to ask if you know what areas that night work will be going on in.
Please, the council, yes, specifically, these are the high-traffic areas tonight. The work is on Easton Avenue between Lanning Lane and, I believe, Park Boulevard, and also Easton Avenue from Cortlandt Street to Mayon Street. They attempted to pave Monday morning, which they shouldn't have, and caused gridlock near the hospital, so this is a reaction to that. The following night, I believe, is French Street. Certain limits, I don't recall, but these are targeted for the high-volume commuter streets to be done overnight.
Thank you. 913 is a contract with the company Vertra Inc. for proprietary hardware and software for the police department. Now, look at the resolution. Can you tell me what type of hardware and software it is? Apologies if it's mentioned.
Provider on training.
And then, at the bottom of page 919, I'd like to understand a little bit about what the hopes are for this grant that is being applied for Esperanza neighborhood, under $20,000. Do you know a little more about that?
The Esperanza organization is applying for this grant in conjunction with the Unity Square Beagle, and the city of New Brunswick is a partner on the application. That's all the information I have on this.
Okay. Has the application been prepared, or not yet?
I don't know.
Okay. Do you know who, for the city, is responsible for this particular grant application?
Danny Domingos from the economic development.
Okay. I'll follow up with him.
Anybody else on the resolutions? Do you know?
Resolution.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes, and I abstained on 19.
So, no doubt. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sekora Ledway.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have a couple of items for discussion by council. We have one discussion with the Los Angeles America, the Sico de Mayo event, May 4th, 2019.
Mr. Council President, members of council, as the council was advised, me and my correspondents and adjutants, there was an incident that occurred at the Sico de Mayo event held by this organization. The law department, at my direction and through the record, directed to Assistant City Attorney Katniss, conducted a review and investigation to that. I want him to report to council this afternoon relative to his findings for council's consideration. I'll turn it over to Mr. Katniss.
Mr. Council President and members of council, you received, I believe, a cover letter from the law department regarding this matter. Basically, we received from the Little Sex County Health Department a complaint for allegations resulting from their attempts to inspect several vendors at the Sico de Mayo festival on May 4th, I believe, was held in the past May 4th. The inspectors went out, you received a copy of the memo, there's certain allegations in that memo that they were prevented from conducting their inspections. There were allegations that food was prepared off-site in violation of their regulations and their requirements. There were allegations that the sponsor of the event, Ms. Escobar, interfered with their ability to inspect individual vendors. There were actually allegations that the individual vendors did not even have their vendor permits in their possession, or in possession with Escobar at the time. The allegation was that she refused to give them to the individual vendors. There was a bit of a confrontation at the event, according to the memo from the health department. The police department conducted some interviews on-site at the time. Officer Chatterjee submitted a memo, the government, the police department's involvement at the time of the incident. The police department did not take any specific action. They requested, they asked, actually, the county health inspector if they wanted to, them to enforce anything by making arrests for obstruction. The health department chose to avoid the confrontation and left the site, and the police department took no further action. Subsequent to that memo being received by the city, certain individuals conducted some further investigations, including myself. I pulled the permit applications from the city clerk's office and noted that Ms. Escobar had applied for a number of permits, and then they appeared to be filled out by two different people. But there's references to Elijah's Promise or Esperanza, the foundation, on some of the permits. I subsequently spoke to the executive director of Elijah's Promise and obtained a letter from them, or from that person, Ms. Wilson, indicating that no one, including Ms. Escobar, contacted Elijah's Promise to prepare any food at their facility. Ms. Wilson stated emphatically that the staff at Elijah's Promise keeps regular records of who cooks at the facility. Everyone's required to sign in, have liability insurance, and they keep records of all of that. They have no records of any vendors from the Sico de Mayo festival preparing food at Elijah's Promise. The city clerk and I met with the health inspector to go over some of the allegations in her memo, and she confirmed just about everything that was in that memo. She emphasized that Ms. Escobar held on to the vendor information licenses and did not produce it when requesting. And I think that's everything that you have, that you've seen. I'm not sure if you have any additional questions, but I think it's pretty clear from the memos and letters that have been submitted that the parties, you know, Rob and Arden have researched it to determine if there was any miscommunication, misunderstanding as to the preparation of food at Elijah's Promise. And I don't think there's any confusion there. There's an emphatic no that nothing was prepared there. So, if you have any questions, we have an answer specifically, but I think that's about it.
The narrative that we got from the health department, they felt threatened.
Yes, and felt that there was no need to push it further. There were a lot of people around. There were, Ms. Smith, I think is the last name, Jessica, emphasized that apparently the inspectors were there, they were being followed by two men who were videotaping on a cellphone or some similar device. And they just felt that it wasn't the appropriate time or place to have a confrontation. As we know, from a prior meeting about a month ago, a summons was issued to Ms. Escobar for violations of the health code. That was scheduled for first appearance on June 28th. I don't know the results of that. I don't know if it was postponed, or if there was a communication back.
Okay. We have someone here.
I know that Mr. Katniss put Ms. Escobar on notice relative to the council's agendizing this incident for discussion at tonight's meeting. She wants to be heard. The council is so inclined, you could hear from her. This isn't a public hearing, though, so to speak. This is a discussion for council relative to authorization.
Ms. Escobar, here?
Yes.
Would you be able to come to the microphone? Just get your names.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. As far as what went on there and treating the inspectors, what they have to say about how the conditions were and how things were not done at Elijah's Promise?
I think I've been hearing everything, and I would love to be part of the investigation. Maybe next time, somebody from the investigation can be some lassos, and we are just proper way, so you're invited to come and ask all people the same questions that maybe you ask other people. So, the city council can have a better view of what's going on with the situation, and maybe hear a little bit about the other vendors. I hear many things, and I wrote a letter, actually, a letter I received today, and I think it was a few days ago, and I just received it today. So, instead, what I've been hearing is, I think I've been here again many times, asking for many departments, not only the health department, but other departments from the city to collaborate with Los Angeles American Union and multiple issues that affect the community. Their purpose is to educate the community about the rights, but also responsibilities as people living in this area. Now about the, what the head official is saying, I think is very sad for us to hear what she's saying, because first of all, the people started recording the issue because she was screaming in English to the vendors. The vendors speak Spanish. So, it's very important that the health department help a lingual people. So, I personally don't have to serve as translator for neither the fire department or the health department. And I think I never had an issue before with none of the officials. And as I said before, you got to speak with the vendors about what is, what, the way they're being treated by this lady. I'm not saying that, I understand that she's true job to investigate what's going on or to apply the regulations, but I think it's very important that maybe have a linguist who will help to avoid these situations. About what they say is that the food was cooked at Elijah's Promise. First of all, these three vendors that I saw made copy, inclusive to the freeholders, copy of all the vendors that were attending the event, that fill out the forms that you mentioned. Three of them, they're already part of the Mercado Esperanza vendors 15 days ago before Sico de Mayo, they were setting at this event, and their webpage in Facebook appears, these three vendors are part of their vendors. So, if somebody applied because they want to sell at our festivals, I don't have the right to deny the, the right to apply, neither. I have to disbelieve that they know cooking at Elijah's Promise, because I saw them 50 days before the Sico de Mayo setting at the same pub. And they didn't get called out by the police or being asked by the police to leave the site. So, I don't have the right to doubt about that. If they lied on the application, if they said something that was not right, then I think it was easily done to fix. If the moment that I called Elijah's Promise on May 3rd, because they reached out to me, no message was left. I tried several times to reach out to them. I left a voicemail, trying to find out if something was my own on May 3rd, in the busy day for us organizing the event as volunteers. But inclusive, I came to the city clerk on May 3rd to retrieve the blue cards for the vendors. No, nothing was being told to us that there's some problems with the vendors, nothing. So, that was my third. Also, the city official, the health official, asked me for a blue card for all the vendors. And when I asked the city clerk about that blue card, it was told to me that it was only given to the vendors outside New Brunswick, not for vendors that are, have the health permit in, in here in the city. So, I asked what about the other, what they have to present, the other restaurants or people. They said they have the permit that they have to present. So, therefore, I thought that the vendors at Elijah's, that cooking at Elijah's Promise, they have already, they should have already that card, because how other way they sell Mercado Esperanza, I don't know. I thought that all the vendors, if they send inspector or there is a regulation on the health of, I mean, rules, then all the vendors on April 17, I think it was April 18, should have copied as well of that permit. So, honestly, in all this confusion, I think the situation with the vendors is one thing. The other way is how health officials communicate with us for these events. I never had a problem with the fire department. They were very nice with us. They speak with the vendors very nice. We translate again very nice. So, I don't know what is situation with this official. And there's her saying, saying that she felt threatened by the community, but we have two freeholders the same moment that she was there, and they never felt threatened. So, I don't know.
Any other questions for?
Well, members of council, with respect to the matter, I think, the reason that the investigation was initially conducted was obviously not, not so much as the disturbance that the health official felt occurred at the event, but the health, welfare, and safety issues that were brought up as a result of the permits having read that the food was prepared in Elijah's Promise's kitchen, and when we determined that they did not, in fact, prepare the food there. Just for the benefit, and I know the council knows this is a benefit to the public, cannot have vendors selling food that's prepared in their own homes or in unknown places. The whole idea of a health department inspection is to ensure that food is prepared under sanitary conditions so as to ensure it is edible and not going to cause people illness as a result of their purchase and ingestion. Health, welfare, and safety is the primary concern when it comes to these types of things, and that's why the health department goes out and checks as to how they're refrigerating things that need to be refrigerated, et cetera. So, this council has been very, very gracious in allowing authorization and permission for many, many different events and organizations in city parks, you know, city property. And as a primary concern of the council and of the city is, is that these events are being held in a safe manner so that members of the public are not sickened by the food or placed in situations that may be peril or jeopardize the health, welfare, or safety. That being said, when this came to the attention of administration and the law department looked into it further, we found it necessary to report to the city council this information. Clearly, the information that was on these applications in the clerk's office was not consistent with what, in fact, was the case in the field.
And I just want to add that in terms of the Mercado Esperanza and the vendors that work at Mercado Esperanza, these vendors are trained. It's not like somebody decided, they're untrained. So, I don't have the tools, because they know their moves and know the situation. So, I don't know what happened at, I don't know why the event happened at the Sico de Mayo event. And although I understand that maybe somebody, if you said that the county health official was a little bit upset, whatever it is, I think that regardless, the law is the law. So, if you would have given them the permits, if you would have told them, she doesn't have it, let them do their job, and then you deal with that in terms of education or anything else later on. They were doing their job. If for any, any activity that was in the city, because we had done festivals, you know, organizations have done festivals, you had to abide by the rules. organizations have done festivals, you have to abide by the rules. And plenty of times that we have, you know, many years festivals that we have to tell them, or you have to go home. Because the safety of the residents and the people that attended that event are fine, that's it, that's why we need to make sure that it doesn't happen. I don't know what happened that day, but still, it doesn't, it doesn't excuse the fact that whoever was there did not follow the rules and did not follow what they needed to do, whether you were involved in that or not, that's again, that's not the issue, it's just that it didn't happen on that event. And you put, because you, and I'm saying you because you're the one who is doing this event, you put the public at risk by not allowing the county health officials to do their job that day.
And I just want to add that whether you're speaking Spanish or English, when you feel threatened, you feel threatened in any language. And the way that, so you turn your counties, explain it to me in the letter and the way that I, what I read is that the people that from the health department were scared, they left, they were, they felt threatened. And you laugh about it the way you want, but I'm just, that's what it says, that's what, I believe everybody believes here, that they feel threatened.
Sir?
Or chased off.
I think, as you mentioned, we've been doing these events for many years and I think I've been trying again to send whoever has to be sent to take the trainings, as you mentioned, they trained already. It's true. Again, if they didn't have permit or not, or if they have or not, there is interrelation between the vendors and the organization, they need collaborating with. And the application, they said they want to be cooking on the side, even there is people that wasn't necessary to do things on site, but that's internal of that. I never, and there is a video, I never deny any city official to do their job. On the contrary, I think they have to do what they gotta do, as you said, to comply with whatever rules are. I'm not there to say no, on the contrary. Now, the person that was asked to leave the park is, again, they've been trained by Elijah's Promise, or in the Mercado Esperanza work many times already. So if something is going on, it's not our situation, it's not our fault. Also, never, nobody from the community threat the health official, there is many witnesses about it, there is a video also. On the contrary, I think there is, as I said, the freeholder was there. And the police went to speak with the lady, asked him in English to leave the site. The only thing that the lady was saying, the person in charge of this thing is not here, wait for her to come back so I can take the stuff out because I don't know when I gotta take it. And the police was there asking her to remove the things immediately or she's gonna, or he's gonna call more officers to do it by force. All that I ask is, please, let me translate what she's saying. And she's saying that she's leaving. And actually, she left after the, the, the head official left. So if the other, if she was saying that there is many of the vendors didn't have a permit, then during investigation, she said that is not true, it was only three people that didn't have that, it was the people that applies saying they want to cook in Elijah's Promise. Again, I didn't put those, those statements because I have to disbelieve what they were saying. Maybe it was a misunderstanding, that's something that's gotta be easily fixed. And it's true, we have to take care of the people, consumers, right? And it's our, 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 as well. That's why the person left the site. We asked her to leave the site because we have a problem right there. So we comply with the orders, we never said no. So, and again, if there is investigation that I'm gonna hear, we'd love to be more equal for everybody to investigate. And I think we have to, all of us work together to ensure that the vendors have the opportunity to use any other kitchen that maybe is good, open for them to use to sell any other event that they have in the city. Maybe that's one solution. The other one is that before we get this, the abuse of power, certain people doing statements against somebody like me, that's always here trying to help community and saying that only her voice is right, is still gonna stay right now, that whatever she says or whatever statement she says is more important than my statement or my community's statement, I think that's wrong. Her voice is important as my word and other people's words. And I think I would never try nobody from the city, right, by saying what I think and what I believe. You don't have to feel threatened by me or my people. When against you.
Do you have two more events of the summertime about you?
Yes, no food is gonna be sold in July twenty first and August fourth, which is the annual Delagazza event. We are already having the meetings with the vendors and this time we wanna make sure that everybody has their come here by themselves with me to make sure that they feel about the proper application or that they present the proper permit that I should, I want to speak with the clerk because, again, I went to the clerk, I followed the rules, it's not the first event that we do, we have since two thousand three doing these events ourselves, so we don't have, we'll never have an issue before.
So July twenty first, there is no food?
No food, no food is gonna be sold.
Fourth is the one to next?
Yes. Yes.
Can we do a closing?
Mr. President, just sort of for clarification, the resolution that was passed in regards to the July twenty first event says catering to be determined. So I, and I think that maybe there should be very specific clarification as to whether or not Ms. Vivar is telling you right now that there will be no catering at that event whatsoever because the resolution does say that leave it open as an option to be determined later.
So are you, for the record, absolutely not having any food or drink or anything like that?
Food vendors are not gonna be at the event.
Cater.
Oh, cater is the, the group, the people wants to eat, so maybe when I have, when I have food from this restaurant, so you need the restaurant name and everything? Okay?
So what would be, is cater?
Same problem. If it's a caterer, the caterer has to make application and if they're, they haven't established the kitchen, they have to state that the food is being prepared there on their own site and follow the protocol.
And that's what I mean for all events, so every, every community organization that hosts a community, whether in any park, will not be applied as a group?
Everybody does, everybody does. We can have any issues on some app, but everybody does. With the health inspectors, there's inspections going out there.
Very interesting because I have many events that are queued by other organizations, they have been catered and they never have to do that, but I just have, do it by the record, so.
They count with us, they count in checks.
Okay.
Are you with her?
I am, I'm the attorney of record for Teresa Vivar and Lassos. I wanted to raise some concerns, if that's okay?
Uh, no.
Can I request a copy of these memoriam?
After you do the public comment, how do you?
You got a way into the public comment?
Just a discussion with Mr. Vivar.
Give her copies of documents, please.
Yeah. Any other closed sessions or?
Well, now that there's an attorney on behalf of the organization, I think if you'd like to discuss it, you can go into closed session and the closed session will be to discuss the, the outcome of your hearing, your view of the matter with the fact that there could be potential litigation now that we have an attorney in the.
You didn't have an attorney, so I guess.
Yeah, not sure of the attorney.
So you're representing this?
Yeah, yes, in the municipal health inspection matter and, and whatever business.
Okay, can you tell us what went on, did it go on trial already?
It has not, I filed my notice of appearance, it was adjourned until July twenty third.
July twenty third.
I also filed discovery requests with the prosecutor, I don't, I know to forward them to the law department, but this was filed in.
How's your name to the record?
Amy Bronstein.
Thank you.
And it's Rutgers Law Associates is the firm.
Thank you.
So if you want to make a motion, go on to closed session, do that, we'll discuss the matter and the threat of potential litigation will be the reason we go into closed session.
Okay.
Motion to go on closed session.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council vice president, Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council president Anderson.
Yes.
Make a motion to go back into open session.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council vice president, Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council president Anderson.
Yes.
For the purposes of the closed session, I just want to put on the record that the council discussed the documentation received, the comments and testimony heard here this afternoon relative to the Cinco de Mayo event and has considered facts and circumstances relative to their investigation.
Okay, Ms. Vivar, please. Our next, your next event is July twenty first, correct, Sunday? Could be catered, so you could have some food there, whatever. All right? For us to make, make a decision here, we don't have all the facts, basically. Can you supply that video to us by Monday, unedited, full video, so that we can have something to go by?
About the event?
The video of that, of the incident that you said that in this video, that nothing, nobody was threatened, that anything, the conversation that happened that day, the Cinco de Mayo event, you stated that.
I wanna make it available to you.
Make it available to you.
The whole video? It's not the whole video, that was sent by, by somebody from the community. I think that was a person that she felt threatened by.
Okay, but is it possible that you can get it to us by Monday afternoon? Okay, thank you, thank you for that. In the meantime, we just need some more information to make sure. You do know that going forward, no matter what, for everybody, that you can't cook at home, bring there, and all those other things that are going on there. The next one is, Beagle Park, if you'll tell you, you're having cars there.
We have what?
You're having some cars, cars on display. Beagle Park?
Oh, yes, the Beagle Park, yes, the low riders.
And you know that they can only go out one side of the street?
Yes, we collaborated with the recreation department and we follow their specific sites and everything where they can park, etc. I just want to say, Mr. Anderson, just to be clear, that I do, you know, if, we are not making a decision tonight, at the next council meeting, when we have, you know, the video, we have time to review the video, then we will make a, we will discuss, further discuss whatever action the council is gonna take. And it's gonna be either or, it's gonna give you ample time because the event is after, so just want to make sure that you understand that and I understand that.
We have a council meeting before that, so if you get it to us by Monday, that'll give us enough time, get it to everybody to find out what's going on, make sure that, as you mentioned before, you know all the rules and regulations and everything else like that, if indeed we say, okay, go on with it, no problem.
I actually also have been called by the Meadows County Health Department and we've been talking about collaborating for the different events to continue working because they apologize for the incident and we want, and they want to collaborate with us and we're gonna be working together to ensure that also they're gonna be sending us the list of the vendors training, the SERSR trainings, so we can send more people to those events through our pages, so we want to work with everybody. And just I want to, for the record of the meeting, I will ask for the next time to the city council that any investigation has to be, again, more, support everybody and not only for one side of the story. I think we deserve, people from the community deserve to also be treated with the same respect as, just as your city officials, I think we also want to be part of the investigation.
Okay, and these vendors that come there, do they pay to the clerk, do they pay you, or they pay both, or how do they?
Usually, we usually, because again, some of them come to recruit the city, some restaurants pay to recruit the city. All the ones that don't know, or they don't have the time because they work also, they, they asked me to do it. And I also, we send again, copy, I think I didn't have the copy of the records of the, the money that is coming through us for the event, I already give it to the freeholders. I can give a copy as well of how much money the vendors give to us, how much money was paid to the city, to the fire department as well. And so we don't have nothing to hide, we're very transparent in our, in, but we want also copy of that report is given to the vendors and volunteers that attend our meetings. We host meetings before the event with the vendors, with the volunteers, to ensure that they define how they wanna contribute for each event because we don't get too much funding to do these events, so we depend on volunteers and donations of the same vendors, so that's why it's so important to vendors for us. And again, I think it's misunderstood and there is a fear, I think we're gonna be here to clarify anything and I think again, it's very important that you guys speak also, all the investigation, speak also with the other vendors that have the permit and, and that we also, we always try to follow the regulations. We also, I also took the classes on, on the front building about the SERSR just to make sure that we comply with the regulations, so we know.
And can you supply us then by Monday also with all those documents that you gave to the council and everything like that?
Yes.
I appreciate that, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, thank you. All right, any other items for discussion by the council? We have one. Just a reminder that the New Jersey Civil Service Commission, New Brunswick Police Hiring Cycle will begin today? Today? Till August, so if you're interested in the New Brunswick Police Hiring Cycle, to get on that notice, you can definitely go to the job seeker title, it's www.state新 Jersey US slash C or feel free to see me. Happy July fourth.
Fireworks tomorrow night, I think the celebration on Thursday at the park, the River Cutting of the mansion.
The opening of the River Cutting ceremony for the mansion on Thursday. Fireworks tomorrow night at approximately nine fifteen, the final park, at Boyd Park. Do that, watch your own fireworks, okay? We have now a public comment, anybody have a public comment, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address, we have also five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. One more time, Charles Prattville, who runs like, who runs like today, and I do want to thank you for doing the right thing on that bid protest and, and you know, not hiring that bad company. And if you want to do something else to continue, you know, working on things where we can agree on, I hope that you will sincerely introduce a resolution to support the impeachment of Donald Trump, the president. And I wanted to ask if your views have changed at all on that, if you're, if that's something you might be willing to do at this point, of course, there's, you know, lots of congressional, people within Congress calling for that.
None at this time.
Okay. I think it's long overdue. I will just state that today is the, the day that many folks are seeing their wages go up under the legislation passed earlier this year, signed by Governor Murphy on February fourth, and that, you know, it does cover municipal government, so I want to ask if the administration, you know, given anybody raises for that July first increase.
Well, I'm sure whatever raises that are being given are being given through the finance department, because payroll, I don't know the individuals that are getting raises, but whoever's entitled to a raise will be getting a raise.
I want to ask about arrangement with Rutgers that was approved at your December twenty seventh meeting, I think it was because of Mr. Schrum and a couple other people leaving their jobs, that you were gonna have Rutgers sort of pick up some of those duties. And it was a six-month agreement, so we're now six months down the road, is that still in place or what's being done?
We are going to extend it probably for another month. We had an electrical inspector become very ill and pass away recently and it's very difficult to fill those spots. So we're looking for someone to cover, but we may need to rely on Rutgers to continue to do our electrical inspections.
Okay. So I guess that means that some of the positions have been filled though?
All the positions except the electrical inspector.
Gotcha. And, and do you know, do you know the names of the people who filled those positions, like who took over for Mr. Schrum?
I, I don't have their.
Okay. I do want to also ask about another change that happened about six months ago. I do want to also ask about another change that happened about six months ago. Mr. Patterson's retired. Of course, department still does not have a permanent head. What's the update on replacing Mr. Patterson as the planning director?
Well, we currently have Dan Dominguez as the acting director, and he's doing fine. So we're not actively looking to replace Mr. Patterson at this time. We're looking to perhaps enhance the department by hiring some additional planners.
Interesting, so I guess was this, what, the company in Cranberry that was hired to search for a new, new head is recommended, or what came of their search?
Some interviews were, were held, but there was not a satisfactory candidate.
Okay. I'll move on, just to ask if there's any insight that the council can give to the future of the vacant abandoned supermarket in our downtown that used to be SuperFresh? Any thoughts on what, what can be done there, what will be done there, when that might happen?
I know there are in talks with different things, looking at different things, do you have any?
I have.
Okay, and I'll just finish my, my kind of try to bring it together here. And I know, you know, last year I put forth a lot of constructive proposals about improving our transportation system, and unfortunately, it is not in good shape right now. Just yesterday, we lost the train service for a few, you know, seemed like a couple hours at least. And the only option people had, if they couldn't catch that train to New York, was to wait in the hot sun, blocking a sidewalk in, in front of the giant hole, the giant pit in the center of downtown. And I've, I've put forth some suggestions, and I hope that the city can really move forward on doing, you know, at least the low hanging fruit, getting more bus shelters. You know, we supposedly have one in the works on Albany Street that's not there yet. This is a busy area, and when, you know, people come to your city and the first thing they see is that you, you barely have any, you know, transportation infrastructure, as soon as you get off the train, and you have a giant hole in the ground, a big old abandoned supermarket, it's not a good welcome to people, and it's not the type of thing that spurs additional investment or makes more people want to live here. And unfortunately, that's what we're getting from the current leadership of our state and, and our local municipality. The parking authority needs to be held accountable for the decisions they're making, and unfortunately, you know, DevCo and the parking authority aren't here today, they're not in the room, but they're the ones who are making all of these things happen. Unfortunately, we have to, to live with the consequences. So I hope you hold step up and hold the parking authority accountable, please do.
Thank you. Anybody else in public? Yes?
Amy Bronstein, 16 Woodbridge Street in Brunswick. I'm referencing the discussion about Lazo's, and I just had a few questions and comments about the investigation. I wanted to inquire as to whether the three vendors who flagged Elijah's Promise and their applications were contacted? Was any attempt made to clarify their status with Elijah's Promise?
Yes.
And is there a reason that Teresa was not contacted as part of the investigation?
No, there's no particular reason.
Okay, and let's see. I wanted to just clarify what action the council was considering taking. This was just flag for discussion, and I, I only received the notice, we only received our Mr. Katniss's letter today, so there was not enough notice to really actively prepare.
Okay, well, there was a resolution passed that gave her basically the permission to have these events. And we've never had any problem before, all of a sudden we have a problem, and we have to decide whether or not it's best for the community and the people who are going there to eat or something like that. It's safe for them?
For all of this going forward, or just the July and August events?
Just those two events at this time.
To rescind? Okay.
Just let them go on as scheduled with different things that we might put down there, or basically let it go as in?
Okay, and who would I talk to about obtaining copies of the memo from the health department, officers, charities, and any other parts of the investigation that I would be entitled to?
Mr. Katniss will give you that information. Why don't you leave your business card, and we'll send it out to you, ma'am?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in public? Seeing none?
Mr. Jerk, second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes, any other?